Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, March 10, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We will now have an invocation by Pastor Ryan Speckman from the Living Word Family Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Chamber Ambassadors.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Always an honor and a privilege. Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for tonight. Father God, we just thank you for this assembly here tonight. Lord, we invite your presence in this meeting tonight, Father God. I just pray for a spirit of love and peace and order over tonight's entire meeting. We just thank you that this is all about unity and increasing our city. Father God, we just thank you for our Mayor, Mayor Cal Sheehy, for Mayor Cal, Vice Mayor David Lane, Chief of Police Dan Doyle, Fire Chief Paul Adams, and the five members of the City Council. I just pray a special blessing and special supernatural protection over them and their families. And Father God, just anoint them for wise decisions, your wisdom, Father God, and to make righteous decisions over Lake Havasu City concerning COVID-19, the coronavirus. We just pray together, all of us here in this room, come into agreement, Psalm 91:10, "No evil shall befall you, nor shall any plague come near your dwelling." So we just thank you for that, Father God, for supernatural protection against pestilences and disease, any natural disaster over Lake Havasu City. We have that authority, and we claim that authority tonight. Concerning the census going on, Father God, we just thank you and pray for order and completion, that it's an accurate number. And we just thank you in advance, Father God, that Lake Havasu City will get everything that it's entitled to over abundance over the city. We thank you for increase and prosperity over Lake Havasu City. We take authority over anything that would try to come against that, that would try to harm our city, drug and alcohol abuse and addiction, domestic violence, even vandalism, theft, things like that. We just take authority over all those things, and we say, no, we will not allow those on Lake Havasu City. We say no to these things. This is God's city, a city of faith, a holy city. Lake Havasu City is part of the Kingdom of God. Father God, we just thank you for morality and righteousness in our city. And for each one here, I just ask for a special blessing for making the effort to come out and just anoint us all, all of the citizens, to be a special blessing, a blessing to our Mayor and the Vice Mayor, Chief of Police, Fire Chief, City Council, and all the employees of Lake Havasu City. Finally, I just want to pray a blessing over all the high school kids here tonight. Just anoint them to do great on their papers and stay up as late as they need to. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and Council members and members of the audience. It's my great pleasure tonight to introduce three members of our Ambassador Committee. They're going to introduce themselves, and then I'm going to give you just a really quick explanation of what our Ambassador Committee is all about.
Hi, I'm Kathy Jo Bomner. I'm the ambassador representing our local community health foundation.
Good evening. My name is Cassie McShane, and I am from the Nautical Water Sports Center.
I'm Maxine Denoit, accounting and bookkeeping services.
And as I normally do, I forgot to introduce myself. So I'm Lisa Krueger, and I'm the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. So the Ambassador Committee is a very, very, very important committee of the Chamber. I always call them the worker bees because the Board of Directors gets all the credit for everything. And, just kidding. But the ambassadors really do so much of the work, and they are a great team. There are 30 members of the ambassadors. We do limit it to 30. So more often than not, we have a waiting list of business owners, managers, or business people that want to become an ambassador, but we have to have patience sometimes. They do a great job. Some of the things that they're best known for, of course, are, you see them in their vests, so they are the team that goes out and does the ribbon cutting. So they bring the big scissors and the red ribbon and welcome our new business members and new businesses to town. They do ground breakings, grand openings, different things like that. Something they're very proud of that they've just started doing recently is they are all, they all go through the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. So every member of our Ambassador Committee is also a CTA. We think that's amazing. They also do a lot of community service projects. They have an Adopt a Street. They actually clean Capri Avenue every year, twice a year. So they enjoy doing that. And at Christmas, they almost always adopt a senior or adopt some families and help out with folks that are in need as well. And they, like I said, we couldn't do it without them. And in a nutshell, that's what they do. So I would like to thank them for everything they do, and thank you for having us here this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams?
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Grove.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Hi, Kelly. I'm here, and I've washed my hands today.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our call to the public. This is the opportunity for citizens to address the members of the City Council on any matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. You do not have to sign up for that, but we do have a few folks that did. There is a time limit of three minutes or less for a call to the public. There is a light indicator box on the podium. Green means you have time. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that three minutes is up. This is not going to be an opportunity for City Council to have a two-way conversation because it's not on the agenda. So we'll listen intently to whatever your comments may be and then move on from there. So again, you don't have to sign up, but we do have a few that did. So we'll start with Shawna Bogard with Up With People, if you'd like to make your way to the podium.
It is a pleasure to be here. Thank you, guys, so much for having me here. My name is Shawna. I am from Up With People. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about Up With People. So our mission is through music and action, we inspire young people to be positive agents of change for a more hopeful, peaceful, and trusting world. So we have 80 young people from 17 different countries in 23 states coming to impact the Lake Havasu community. They'll stay and host families to really be emerged into the culture. They'll do a show at the end of the week as a thank you to the communities for being so opening, so welcoming. And then they'll do over 1,000 hours of volunteer work while they're here. They'll be working with the Havasu Community Health Foundation, they'll be working with the Mojave Community College, and many different organizations here. So just wanting to give you guys all the opportunity to host because we are currently looking for host families to really get out into the community, to allow the community to get involved with us giving back. I have flyers, and Up With People was brought to town by Campbell Cove One Stop, Anderson Toyota, Unisource Energy, Radio Central, and Mojave Community College. Thank you. And if you have, if you need any more information, you can find me at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Shawna, you want to explain when the show is going to be, what the dates are, and how people can get involved?
Yes, I can do all of that. So the show will be on April 2nd and April 3rd at 7:00 PM at the Lake Havasu, at Lake Havasu High School Performing Arts Theater. And then the days to host will be from March 30th until April 5th, which is the week that they'll be in town.
So the days to host, you're looking for host families for the participants?
Correct. So the host family days will be from March 30th to April 5th.
And if they want to host, how do they get ahold of you?
I have these beautiful little flyers with all of my information on the back, so you guys can come visit me after.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next speaker is William Pesky. Did I say that right?
No.
We've met a few times.
Pexy.
Pexy, all right. Sorry, I've never seen it spelled out. So, yeah, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and city staff, Mr. City Manager. My name is Bill Pexy. I'm a proud resident of our wonderful city, and I'm here tonight to speak on a letter that I had sent to the City Manager February 28, 2020 regarding the city's amazing disappearing beach on the Bridgewater Channel. I'm here representing the Kingsview Condo Association. We're located on the Bridgewater Channel between Windsor 4 and the English Channel. And we, proud owners, proud city members, and we've had an issue that we've been working with, with the city. We started a letter-writing campaign back in 2014, March of 2014, to identify the beach. I call it Breezy Lane Beach. That's the street that we access our condo on. But there's an issue with the beach, and it's disappearing. So far, there's probably 180 feet of beach that the city owns that has disappeared. We worked with the city in 2015 to come out and do some emergency protective repairs to the first 100 feet from which the beach was eroded. That cost the city about a half million dollars to fix that section. There's another 80 feet of beach that's eroded away from the wall, exposing the footing and subjecting the wall to failure. So all total, we've lost about, the city has lost about, and beaches to the city are precious resources. We've lost about 200 feet of beach that has disappeared now and turned into lake bottom. And so I just want to identify that for you. We're willing to work with the city to come up with some reasonable means of solution. We've proposed that. We've had the Corps of Engineers out. We've had J.E. Fuller, which is a hydraulic, hydrology engineering firm, a well-recognized engineering firm, and we paid them to come up with some solutions. We've been in contact with the city. We've partnered with the Chima Wavy Indian Tribe at this point to do some dredge applications in an effort to come up with some money. And so it's just, to us, it's a shame to watch this huge resource just disappear into the channel bottom and not have a response. And it's a city-owned beach, and I just feel the city, having it been identified, would want to take some sort of proactive action instead of being reactive and just coming out and taking, like, what I would call emergency protective measures to protect the boardwalk, which is what you did in your first repair back in 2015. So we're willing to work with you. We think there are some solutions, and we just don't want to see any more of the beach disappear into the channel bottom and be a lost resource. So thank you for the time, and we stand ready to, you know, work with the city in whatever capacity we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council at the Call to the Public? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. The next item is Item 6 on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove anything for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7 is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is a pretty exciting item tonight. We're going to be recognition of a donation from the Lake Havasu Pickleball Association for pickleball court expansion at Dick Samp Memorial Park. Mr. Keen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you stated, we do have a very exciting presentation tonight. I'm not going to talk a whole lot about it. I'm going to let the association say their words. So with no further ado, I'd like to introduce the President of Lake Havasu Pickleball Association, Mr. David Rosson.
You can't believe how excited I am to be here tonight. And I am David Rosson. I am the President of the Lake Havasu City Pickleball Association, and we are here to donate to Lake Havasu City a check for $100,000 for construction of additional pickleball courts at Dick Samp Park. With me, assisting me with this presentation are two key players in our association. First is Mr. Mike Delaney. Mike is our financial cheerleader and a significant donator to our fundraising effort monetarily. Our second individual is Janie Morris, who is the Chairwoman of our Resource Fundraising Committee. Without these two individuals, we would not be here tonight. So I thank them. No, you get to stay here. You can lower that a little bit. So Mayor Cal Sheehy, City Manager Des Knutson, City Council, we thank you for working with us to make this project come to fruition. And big packages, big items do come in small packages.
Yes, yeah, very nice. Yeah, thank you so much. What I'm going to ask everyone to, if anyone that's with the Pickleball Association, if you want to come up to the dais, and then if my colleagues on council want to come around, and we'll take one big group photo with the presentation.
I would give that to you. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yes. I would comment that I did not specifically invite 241 members of this association to attend tonight. We simply left it open to them to attend if they chose. This is part of them, and they are a terrific group of people to work and play with, and I thank them for coming.
All right, we're going to get picture vote. That's to get. Keep on coming. to expand the pickleball courts at Dick Samp Park. Thank you to the Pickleball Association for all of their hard work. It's partnerships like these and a community that make it so strong. So projects like this can come to fruition based on partnerships and private dollars helping to augment public dollars, which is a really exciting thing. Just, what, four years ago, we didn't have any pickleball courts, and now we are already going for our first expansion on our municipal courts. So congratulations again for all of your efforts, and thank you, Mr. Keen, for all of your efforts through parks. All right, we'll move on to Item 7.2 on the agenda, which is our Fiscal Year 2019/22 Quarter Contracted Service Agency Reports. These were filed by Chief Doyle for our review. Does anyone have any questions? All right, we'll move on to Item 7.3, which is Announced Vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, one alternate member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. Item 7.4 is our City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start the report this evening with an update on Dr. Sues's birthday. It was celebrated in conjunction with the Read Across America Day at various elementary schools on Friday, February 28th. Councilmember Lynn, you attended the breakfast at Smoke Tree Elementary School and read, "There's a Wocket in My Pocket," to your friend Matty. Vice Mayor Dave Lane, you presented a proclamation at Nautilus Elementary School to Principal Roger Berger with the nice hat there. And sixth-grade student Canyon Smith. And Mayor Sheehy, you read to the classrooms at both Calvary and Talisa Schools. What a fun day. Let me try. There we go. Mayor Sheehy proclaimed February 28th as Teen Challenge of Arizona, Lake Havasu City Banquet Day in Lake Havasu City. Teen Challenge of Arizona offers hope in winning the war on drugs with a documented success rate of 86%. The Havasu Preparatory Academy's first-through-sixth-grade pay students visited with Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor David Lane, and Councilmember Michelle Lynn last week to learn about local government. Students learned about the U.S. Constitution, how local government works, and what motivates our elected officials on the City Council to run for office. Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor Lane, and Councilmember Lynn must have been a very big hit with the kids because they were invited to many birthday parties that day. Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor Lane, and Councilmember McCoy attended the grand opening of the newly reimagined visitor center in the English Village. The center's new look features an improved experience that takes visitors on a journey through Lake Havasu City's history. And the last picture there on the right is the NOVA graduation was last Friday. It was an opportunity for Chief Doyle, our Lake Havasu City PD, School Resource Officers, and leaders in our community to congratulate our fifth graders for completing the NOVA program, which promotes abstinence from the use of harmful substances, staying on a successful path, and making good decisions in life. The GFPA, or the Government Finance Officers Association, just announced that Lake Havasu City has received the GFPA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our city's budget. This award represents a commitment of the City Council and staff in meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. So congratulations to Jill Olson, our Admin Services Director, and her fabulous team. Nice work. The Tri-City Council Members, which is representatives of Bullhead City, Kingman, and Lake Havasu City, we met at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Office in Phoenix just a few weeks ago for a legislative update from the League staff. The three cities also met with Senator Barelli and enjoyed a very honest conversation. And then Lake Havasu City Council and staff, we met up with Representative Leo Biasucci at the Capitol while the House was in session. He was kind enough to sneak off the floor and say hi to us. We'd like to thank all of our representatives and Senator Barelli for their support of Lake Havasu City. Just today, Kingman, Bullhead City, and Lake Havasu City met with Mojave County Public Health Director Denise Burley, an epidemiologist, Anna Scherzer, today for a regional discussion on the latest and most up-to-date information about COVID-19. While there are no cases reported in Mojave County, the Public Health Department is closely monitoring the situation and coordinating a regional effort if needed. The Public Health Department plays a pivotal role in promoting and protecting the health of this community, and we appreciate their partnership. And we will continue to meet with them on a regular basis so we have the latest information and we can respond as a region if needed. And at the last First Friday Event that was held at Yard City, a live painting of our census logo, which is right behind me on the wall here, was painted by Tara Watkins. And we have a time-lapsed video I'd like to show. It's 30 seconds long. Steve Blaker, Web Services and Media Coordinator, captured this time-lapse video of her performance. Thank you. Thank you. Again, special thanks to Tara Watkins and the organizers of the First Friday Event. And a reminder to everybody in the community that the census is very, very important, so make sure you're counted, as everyone counts in Lake Havasu City. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Item 8, our public hearings. 8.1 is Adopt Resolution Number 20-3380, Appointing a Regular Member to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received two applications requesting consideration for appointment as a regular member on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This appointment is necessary to fill the vacancy of a regular member position. Both applications were provided to you in your packet, and I believe both applicants are in attendance today to answer any questions and make a brief presentation to the City Council.
Excellent. Thank you. So is Ms. Lori Howell here? Hi, Lori. If you could make your way to the podium and just let us know what your thoughts are about joining the board and why you would like to volunteer for this?
Thank you for having me here today. So I am very involved with our local drug prevention coalition called YADA, and I have been involved with drug prevention efforts and healthy activities because I'm a substance abuse counselor by trade. And everything that I've been doing is very focused on that. And I'm interested in being part of Parks and Rec because of all the positive things it has to do for our youth and our families, and I want to expand my knowledge of how we can connect our community members to these opportunities and see how it can enhance the work that I'm already doing with multiple coalitions and organizations in town that have similar interests. And so I see it as an opportunity for me to give back to our community as well as learning something so I can be a more effective helper in those areas in which I am helping.
Excellent. Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Howell? Yes?
I just had one quick question. How long have you been in our community?
I'm in my 13th year here. Yes.
From where?
Oh, I came from the Phoenix area, and I've been with Mojave Community College since I first got here and plan to stay with them, too. And I have been involved with our community coalitions since around 2009, so just two years after I got here, I got involved with working with the community in that level.
Great. Any additional questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And then is Mr. Christopher Galaga? I don't know. I'm the worst pronouncer. Did I get close?
Close enough.
Okay.
Mr. Galaga.
Galaga, okay.
Well, I've only been here for a little less than two years. I came from Hong Kong, so nearby. The, my primary motivation is to be of service to my community. So I've been browsing around, spent a lot of time in the dog park in the evenings, go out to Sarah Park on the weekends, hiking the trails, and looking at what was needed in the community that would fit with my work. I work as the Food Service Director for the Lake Havasu Unified School District, so what fits with my schedule there. A lot of the sort of community work happens at the same time of day. So serving on a board or a committee that's mostly evening or in the parks seemed more suitable, and I don't know much about flying. I know probably less about zoning, so Parks and Rec seemed like a natural affinity.
Excellent. Do any members of the council have any questions? No? All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. We have one position that is available. We have two great applicants, which we thank you for volunteering to be involved. This is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion from one of the members of the council for appointing one of these two great qualified applicants to the position.
So I'm assuming that having them play rock, paper, scissors is...
So I'm assuming that having them play rock, paper, scissors is not appropriate right now?
No, yeah, we get the tough job of having to choose one, but there'll be a vacancy again in the future that hopefully the other party will play again.
I was just gonna add that we will keep the application on file for up to a year. In the event that there's a vacancy, we'll bring that forward if they're interested.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. This is seven of us. We're elected to make, do the tough decisions for Lake Havasu City.
It is a very tough decision. Nobody wants to be the one to make the decision, so I will. I move to adopt Resolution Number Two Zero Dash Three Three Eight Zero, Appointing Lori Howell as a regular member to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent. Again, thank you both for volunteering. We'll keep the application on file. All right, moving on to item eight point two is adopt the Lake Havasu City Municipal Airport Master Plan. Mr. Herb?
Thank you. Yeah, what we have before you tonight is our final draft of our airport master plan. This is an eighteen-month effort on behalf of city staff and our council to update or revise our current master plan. A hard copy has been included in your council communication tonight. As noted in the draft document, this was last approved in 2009, and the FAA recommends that we update the document every seven to ten years. The last time we updated it in 2009, we had Kaufman and Associates do that for us. And we hired them again to do it for us in this go-around. We have a contract with them as well. They're familiar with the process, and they did a good job in the last time they did it as well too. Over the course of the last twelve months, we've had planning advisory committee meetings. We had four of those. We had three public information workshops to get input from the public. And last month, our airport advisory board has recommended approval by city council to move forward with the approved master plan. We do have Kaufman and Associates here tonight to give you a presentation. Our airport manager could not make it here tonight. He's been ill and given the virus issues. It was thought best that he not show up tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kaufman and Associates.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, and fellow city council members. Again, my name is Matt Quick with Kaufman Associates. With me this evening is Jacob Allen, also with Kaufman Associates, and we have been involved with this airport master plan update. As Jeff had mentioned, we started this process back in late 2018 and come before you this evening with a culmination of the draft final master plan report that I'd like to just spend a few moments talking about and just hitting on some of the highlights. It's a pretty thick document, so we could be here for a long time if I go into detail, so I'll stay at about thirty or forty thousand feet in terms of giving you guys some of the highlights of the study process this evening. But just real quickly, Kaufman Associates, we're an aviation and airport planning and consulting company based out of Phoenix, Arizona. Like Jeff had mentioned, we were involved with the last master plan update in 2009, and it's been a pleasure for us to come alongside the city here in this most recent go-around of the master plan update and looking at some of the demand segments and impacts that the airport has on the local community and even the regional and national air transportation system. So, as I'd mentioned this evening, I just wanted to touch base on some of the highlights of what a master plan is, why it's important to do that. The Federal Aviation Administration is the overriding federal agency that has jurisdiction over airports and aviation and airspace within the United States. They recommend that a master plan be updated on average every seven to ten years, or as demand would dictate. So it's certainly a timely reassessment of what's going on at the airport and making sure that it's being operated in a safe and efficient manner based upon a lot of the rules and regulations that are out there in the aviation industry. The master plan provides a guiding document for the city. It's really a roadmap for what future development potential could look like at the airport based upon a variety of segments, whether it's safety, or demand, or maintenance needs, things such as that. For Lake Havasu City Municipal Airport, there's really two major demand segments that we studied. One was the number of based aircraft at the airport, and the number... And the other one was the number of annual aircraft operations. So I'll get into that here in just a moment. But again, a master plan provides an opportunity to look at the airport from a regional and national perspective. There's been a lot that's changed locally, as well as even regionally and nationally with the economy, as well as the aviation industry since the last master plan update back in 2009. So again, all the more reason for this to be a timely reassessment of what's happened and occurred locally as well as nationally in the aviation industry. Like I'd mentioned, it's really a roadmap to allow for future development potential. One of the key components of the master plan is developing a detailed capital improvement program. Each year, airport staff as well as city staff will coordinate with the Federal Aviation Administration, as well as Arizona's Aeronautics Division, in terms of identifying potential projects that could be needed at the airport over the next five to ten years. And the master plan helps lay out the groundwork for some of those potential projects for the city and airport to coordinate with the federal and state government on in terms of trying to be able to obtain grant funding assistance to help develop projects at the airport. An airport layout plan drawing set is kind of the culmination of the master plan. That's actually the process we're in right now in terms of preparing those technical sets of drawings, which we will coordinate with the FAA after we get through this approval process this evening here with city council. And then really, it's an opportunity to just engage stakeholders and tenants and the general public in terms of being able to understand and see the significance of the airport and aviation and what it means to the local community at large. So we had an opportunity to do that through various meetings during the course of the master plan process. We split the master plan process into three phases. Like I said, we got this started back in October through 2018. The Federal Aviation Administration requires a particular set of elements in terms of the master plan study, so I'm not going to go into these in detail, but this was kind of the first phase of the study dealing with the inventory, forecast, facility requirements. This really set the stage, again, looking at the number of based aircraft at the airport and making projections over the course of the next twenty years. The same with annual operations. That really helped set the stage for the types of facilities and particular needs that would be needed at the airport over the course of the next several years. So that was the first phase of the study process. We also conducted an alternatives phase in terms of laying out different areas of the airport to help meet that potential demand over the next twenty years. And then the final phase of the study process, bringing all that together into a recommended development concept and then a capital program, identifying a lot of projects. Again, some of those are going to be safety-related, demand-related, maintenance-related, things such as that. So this is the final phase that we're in right now. We held our last committee meeting and last round of public meetings back in December, right before the holiday. And then we come before you this evening with this draft final report, and then we will coordinate the draft airport layout plan drawing set with the FAA for ultimate approval. So that's just a brief snapshot of the study process. We went through a lot of different methods of study involvement. Like I'd mentioned at the outset, we identified what we term as a planning advisory committee. And this was a group of approximately twenty stakeholders. We met actually in this room four separate times during the course of the study process. Airport tenants, various local businesses, city staff, airport staff, Federal Aviation Administration, ADOT Aeronautics Group. Those were just some of the players at the table that we utilized during the course of this planning advisory committee. Like I said, we met four times during the course of the study process with this group. We also held three public information workshops out at the terminal building. This allowed an opportunity for other tenants and stakeholders and just the general public to come and take a look and see what we were doing. Obviously, a key to the master plan is to not prepare it in a vacuum, but we feel that it's obviously best to be very transparent about the process and allow engagement and opportunity for people to respond to that. So we were able to do that during the course of study and had very successful planning advisory committee meetings, as well as three fairly well-attended public information workshops out at the terminal building as well. Just real briefly, talking specifically about the airport, and again, we go into great detail of that in the master plan, but the airport is identified by the Federal Aviation Administration, as well as ADOT Aeronautics Group. It's included in what's called the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. And being identified in that particular category allows federal and state grant funding assistance to the airport for projects. So it's very important for the airport to be included in that program. It has been since it was built, where its current location is, back in the early nineties, and it continues to be recognized as an important asset from the federal and state government perspective. And going through the course of this process, if you've had an opportunity to look at anything or be involved with some of the meetings, you've probably seen that it certainly is a very key component from a local perspective in terms of what it has to offer and the types of activities that occur at the airport. Obviously, general aviation activity, but there's also components of air taxi, air cargo, a lot of military aircraft operations as well. So the airport does see a significant number of different demand segments that occur at the facility. Like I had mentioned, one of the key components of the master plan is identifying those aviation demand segments. Based aircraft and the number of annual aircraft operations are the two key indicators. When we started this study back at the end of 2018, the airport had one hundred and sixty based aircraft and estimated approximately forty-five thousand annual aircraft operations. The master plan is a twenty-year planning document, so we're looking twenty years in advance, trying to get a good understanding of the different demand segments and what they could turn into. So we see, based upon local trends that are going on from a demographic standpoint, as well as a socioeconomic standpoint, and just the local economy, as well as what's happening regionally and nationally in those economies, as well as the aviation system, the potential for based aircraft to grow to upwards of two hundred over the course of the next twenty years, and then annual aircraft operations to increase to approximately sixty-five thousand. So based upon those numbers, we then project different types of facility needs and demand segments that would be needed for the airport to meet these specific demand indicators. And that's kind of the culmination of the master plan process. This slide that I have, this is the recommended design concept for the master plan. It kind of pulls everything together and looks at the airfield system from a runway standpoint, taxiways. It takes into consideration not just the number of aircraft that operate at the airport, but the types of aircraft. Obviously, a small, single-engine piston airplane is a lot different from a demand standpoint versus a larger corporate business jet. And the airport sees both of those demand segments, and like I'd mentioned, military operations. So it does see a significant number and a wide breadth of different activities and operations. So we looked at the airfield system to make sure it can continue to meet those different demand segments and also laid out particular landslide facilities from a hangar standpoint, aircraft parking that can accommodate this demand over the next twenty years. So this particular exhibit shows the highlights and kind of the culmination of bringing all that together in terms of being able to meet safety needs, as well as maintenance needs, and the types of hangar facilities that could accommodate the different aviation and aircraft segments at the airport over the next several years. The capital improvement program, here is what I talked about, and we don't have a slide in this PowerPoint presentation, but in Chapter Six of the draft final report, we list several projects. I think there's about forty projects that we listed to take into account potential needs that the city and the airport should pay attention to as some of these demand segments come into play over the course of the next several years. We identified a pretty hefty number in terms of capital improvement needs needed at the airport in the way of approximately forty-three point six million dollars over the next twenty years. Now, when you look at the breakdown of that from a Federal Aviation Administration standpoint, as well as ADOT Aeronautics, those two entities do have grant funding assistance available to airports. So when you break down the actual eligibility of those projects that we identified in the realm of forty-three point six million dollars, over ninety percent of that total is eligible for FAA and ADOT grant funding assistance. And there are programs in place. The airport has certainly utilized those services in the past. As a matter of fact, there's projects going on out at the airport right now that are being funded through the FAA as well as the state. Even this master plan update was funded through an FAA and a state grant as well. So about, of that total, about four point five million dollars has been identified for potential local need and contribution to help match some of those projects again, over the course of next several years. This will obviously fluctuate as demand dictates, as safety needs and maintenance, pavement maintenance, things such as that, but the master plan helps provide that justification and identifies those projects for the city and airport staff to coordinate with the federal and state government over the course of the next several years. I'd mentioned earlier the airport layout plan drawing set. Don't expect you to be able to really get into the detail in this, other than just to show it. This is really the final phase of the study process. This is a very technical set of drawings. It's identified by the FAA, and this is what we will be coordinating with them after approval of the master plan process from a local standpoint. It's included in an appendix at the very back end of the draft final master plan report that's before you this evening. One of the components of the study process too that was... It was separate from what we did with the master plan, but we did have a subconsultant on our team that did an economic impact analysis of the airport. And that report is also included as an appendix in the back end of the draft final master plan report. And if you haven't had a chance to look at that, I would really encourage you to do so. There's some pretty significant numbers that are included in there. We had a gentleman by the name of Dr. Lee McFeeters out of Arizona State University, who we've utilized in the past for some of these economic benefit studies. And he came up and spent a couple days with airport staff and various tenants on the airfield and did a very detailed analysis of the types of businesses and the contributions that those businesses make to the local economy, and then even took it a step further based upon aviation activity out into the community. So these were just the highlights of the on-airport direct benefits. Approximately ninety jobs that constitute about six million dollars in payroll and about seventeen point five million dollars in output. That's just the airport on an annual basis. When you actually take into account the secondary impacts to the community and how those impact those, we're looking at over thirty-four million dollars in annual output or revenue that the airport provides to the city of Lake Havasu, almost two hundred and fifty people employment-wise, and over eleven point seven million dollars in payroll or income. So some pretty significant numbers included in that. And he goes into a lot more detail in that appendix in the back end of the draft final master plan report in terms of outlining some of that. So that's kind of the high-level look at the master plan and what it is and the significance that the airport has on the local community. I'd be happy to help answer any questions if you guys have anything. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, great. Thank you. So what does the master plan say about commercial air service? You know the question was coming.
Yeah, so, no, it's certainly a component we looked at. And as most of you are probably familiar with, Lake Havasu City Municipal Airport in the past has had that commercial service component. I think 2006 was actually the last year that it did accommodate commercial service. I remember when we went through the last master plan and finished it in 2009 when we started that study, they were just, commercial service had just moved out of the airport. That's a very fluctuating market. We did take a look at that in our forecast of aviation demand. We did spend a section looking at potential commercial service employments in terms of if they were to come back to the airport and how the airport could accommodate those. So we ran some scenarios in terms of looking at the need of the airport if they were to generate thirty-five thousand employments through the long term, and based upon that need, what it would take from a terminal building standpoint to accommodate that. So we did spend some time in the report looking at that. Commercial service, it's tough. It's a fluctuating market. The way the airlines have consolidated and things like that, I would say it's probably tougher for smaller communities to get that type of service now versus ten to fifteen years ago. But there's certainly, you know, some factors at play in Lake Havasu in terms of maybe just not the traditional commercial service, scheduled service, whether it's to Vegas or Phoenix or something like that, like has been traditional, but even tapping into the seasonal market, like with what's coming on with spring break and some of those non-traditional carriers such as Allegiant and Sun Country. Sun Country operates up at Laughlin-Bullhead International Airport. Allegiant, obviously, the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport and flies to some of those destination cities such as Lake Havasu. So not to say that it couldn't happen in the future. We did take a look at it in the study process and outlined some projects if it were to return what the city and the airport should look at doing in order to accommodate that.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for tremendous work and for explaining the economic benefits that the community drives from the airport. You know, the investments that are made out there are typically measured in the millions, but to use budget numbers that we're probably all more comfortable with, for every hundred dollars that gets invested out there, probably ninety of those dollars are grants from the federal government. And the city may only be putting ten bucks out there, but for every ten dollars we put out there, we may be getting tens of thousands of dollars in economic benefit and jobs for the community. So it's just one of the very few places in municipal government where you get an enormous, enormous return for your investment. So by you explaining that and including that economic piece, I was really pleased to see that, so that everybody else can understand that, why that's so important to the community. I did have a question though. I noticed that when you did your extrapolation on based aircraft, that it all seemed to have a pretty orderly statistical progression. I don't know how you come up with that progression. But what I did notice is, you know, your single-engine, single-prop aircraft, your turboprops, and so forth in military, but your jet aircraft, very orderly progression until you went out right to the end, and then there was a pretty significant statistical jump. I was wondering if you could expand on that for me, please?
Yeah, that's a great question. When you look at based aircraft from a general aviation perspective, traditionally, this airport has, the large majority of based aircraft are the smaller, single-engine piston airplanes. When you look at the national fleet of that aircraft mix and what happens at airports across the country, that's typically the norm. The fastest-growing segment of general aviation activity in this country is no longer the smaller, single-engine piston-powered aircraft. It's the... It's the business corporate aircraft. So when you look at the overall fleet mix of aircraft, even here at this airport and especially nationally, you're going to see that fastest-growing segment being in the business corporate thing, side of things. And then really, since you can attribute a lot of that to 9/11, just with security and safety at airports and the amount of time it takes to get through commercial service airports, and for a lot of businesses, time is money, so they can invest in the corporate side of things, and they find that more attractive, more productive in terms of being able to operate out of that segment of aviation. This airport continues to experience that. There's some limitations on aviation activity in the state of California that makes it more enticing for aircraft to relocate to other parts of the country. And obviously, Lake Havasu is not that far from California and some of those large corporate demand segments in the LA area or the Bay Area. So you've actually seen some growth in hangar development at the airport in recent years, and those hangars are now full, and they're not full with small, single-engine-powered aircraft. They're King Air, turboprop, and corporate business jets. So we took that into consideration when we looked at the based aircraft fleet mix.
May I follow up, Mr. Mayor? One small question to kind of tie this into our fire department. So with the kind of expansion we're looking at in those corporate aircraft, I think people in the industry are pretty cognizant of the fact that avionics packages are tremendously expensive compared to airframes. So I would assume that even though we don't have commercial aircraft, it is a good idea for us to have an ARF.
It's a very enticing segment to be able to consider, and I can tell you that there's a lot of corporate and business activities at airports that that's one of the first things they look at. ARF is not a requirement at the airport since it doesn't have commercial scheduled service, but it's certainly something that those corporations do look at.
The good news is we have an ARF at our airport, so that's good. Is there any additional questions of the council? Vice Mayor Lane?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to talk about this report. I spent hours and hours and hours going over this report since I got it. And first off, I just want to say thank you. It's a great report. You did a lot of past history, and none of us were on the council 10 years ago when the last one came out. So having some of that past history was very much appreciated. And then where we're at now and then where we need to head in the future was great. It was very interesting. As I went through, I had a lot of questions, and I'm writing questions down as I go along. By the time I got to the end of Chapter Six, all my questions have been answered. So I really appreciate that, the fact that you took the time to think about all those different aspects on there, because it's a very, very thorough report. If anybody ever wants to read it, I got a copy. It'll help you sleep at night.
It will.
And it's, uh, it will give you the history of commercial air travel here in Lake Havasu, what we had and why we don't have it now, and what we may get in the future, such as air taxis, and the way it's causing issues, not just for our airport here, but airports throughout the entire country. Because this is an airport master plan for here, but it goes in-depth for airports across the United States. So thank you for all of that background information. It really puts everything into perspective.
Thank you, council member.
Any other questions or comments? All right. And it is like a chapter book, if you haven't seen how thick it is. So it is a thick book. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the Lake Havasu City Municipal Airport Master Plan dated January 2020.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Groth and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you, and thank you for all your work.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate it. All right, item 8.3 is approve of cooperative purchase for water and wastewater disinfection equipment, parts and services from Precision Integrated Systems LLC. Mr. Frostley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and good evening. This first item is actually a scheduled replacement for our polymer feed equipment at the wastewater, at the water treatment plant. It was, uh, it was scheduled in that. We include it in the approved budget for this year, and the dollar amount is $52,000. So we're here tonight to ask for approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Do any of the members of the council have any questions for Mr. Frostley? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase for water and wastewater disinfection equipment, parts and services from Precision Integrated Systems LLC, exceeding $50,000 utilizing the city of Mesa, Arizona, contract number 2019084, and authorize the city manager to sign the cooperative purchase agreement and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew the cooperative purchase agreement for a maximum of two years through August 26, 2026.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Groth and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is approve sole source purchase of water meters from Badger Meter for water meter upgrades as part of the Small-Scale Water Efficiency Grant Project recently awarded by the Bureau of Reclamation. Mr. Frostley.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you indicated, we recently received a grant award from the Bureau of Reclamation for some water meter purchases. We are using this grant opportunity as a pilot project to buy an upgraded meter from our nutating disc meter, which has a lot of moving parts in it and tends to wear out over time, to an ultrasonic meter that doesn't have any moving parts and reportedly should retain their accuracy for far, far longer, for the life of the unit, actually. To test that, we are purchasing the ultrasonic meters with this grant money. We've selected strategic locations throughout town to be part of the program, to monitor the water loss or potential for water loss with our existing meters that are 10, 15, and 20 years old. So the grant has been awarded. We're to the point now where we're purchasing the meter to begin this pilot program, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Frostley?
Yeah, just for the folks in the audience at home, the Badger meters have been used in Lake Havasu City since its inception of the irrigation and drainage in 1962. So we've been using them for a really long time, and they're throughout the entire community. So, and it's a sole source because this is the vendor that is the exclusive representative for the state of Arizona.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I left that whole part out of my.
I think it's kind of a cool thing, like we've been using them since the beginning.
Yeah, every meter in our system is a Badger meter, and we typically buy 1,500 or 2,000 every single year to replace the older ones. Because we got this grant opportunity, we're going to try a different kind of meter. Because we have so many older meters in the system, we're concerned that we might not be accurately recording the amount of water being used out there. So that's what this program will tell us.
Yeah, that's great. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Vice Mayor Lane, do you have a comment?
Yes, just want to clarify, Mr. Frostley, this is, the motion is for 150,000, but only 75 of it is city money, the other 75 is the grant money.
That is correct. It's a 50/50 match, yes.
Excellent. And then if I read correctly, this has newer technology, so if we decide to go with automatic meter reading without sending somebody out to the houses, these new meters would have that capability?
They have a capability to be upgraded to a remote read, yes, and that would be Phase Two. If this pilot program works, we'll, it's a more expensive meter than what we're currently using, but it's got a lot more features, and it's likely that we will move towards this meter as our new standard because of the remote read capabilities.
Okay, excellent. All right, any other comments?
Can I get one of those old meters that are less reliant on my house?
You're not the first person to ask that question.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Let me say that while my screen went off. I move to approve the sole source purchase of water meters from Badger Meter for water meter upgrades as part of the Small-Scale Water Efficiency Grant Project recently awarded by the Bureau of Reclamation in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second, and they might be charging you more if you use an old one.
All right, we have.
We'll definitely look into that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is award bid for fiscal year 2019, 2020 for the chip seal program to Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport, Inc. Are you taking that, Mr. Frostley?
I am.
Okay.
I couldn't pass up this opportunity to discuss chip seal with the mayor and council this evening. As you indicated, this is our annual chip seal program. We went out for public bids as we typically do. We received five very competitive bids. The low bid of $773,946.78 was from Cactus Asphalt, who does a lot of our chip seal program, most of them actually, so we don't have any concerns with regards to that. One of the things you might have noticed is the amount of chip seal we're doing this year as compared to previous years is significantly less, but what you don't see in your packet is the fact that all of the other treatments with regard to crack filling and fog sealing have significantly increased. So to stay within our budget and treat the streets appropriately, given their condition for this year, chip seal was reduced so we could expand some of the other programs. And I can get into those details if you like.
Yeah, sure. If you want to talk about the percentage, I believe it's, oh, eight, nine percent of all the roadways this year?
A little over 10%.
Okay, great.
If you include fog sealing and the chip sealing. What happened, just to tell a little background story, if you remember when we were wrapping up the wastewater system expansion program, which required repaving all the streets, the last two years, two to three years, were combined into some very large projects to get done sooner, which means we have a large segment of town with pavement that is now all eight to 10 years old. So they're not ready to receive a chip seal quite yet, but they are ready to have a fog seal to prolong that life another three to four years before we come back and evaluate them for a chip seal. So the fog seal program, which is typically $80,000 to $90,000 per year, this year is actually, we're estimating at $600,000 to cover all those streets. And that bid will open up March 18th. That's on the streets right now. So chip seal is a little bit smaller, which we're okay with. We do have, depending on where the fog seal program comes in, we're estimating with our HERF allocation approximately $100,000 remaining with our HERF, within our approved budget for this year. So there may be opportunities that we can evaluate once we open the fog seal to maybe add a street or two and use up to 100% of our approved HERF budget for this year.
Great.
Have a question?
Yes.
Unfortunately, when you say chip seal, I can picture that in my head, but fog seal, what is the difference between?
Fog seal, it's oil that's sprayed on the streets to lock you in, to activate the moisture that's still in the pavements and seal it in. It's asphalt is referred to as flexible pavement, but after eight to 10 years in the sun, it's far less flexible and it becomes rigid and starts breaking off and alligator cracking. So we fog seal it, which is just, it's almost like spraying an oil. Exactly spraying an oil on it, and that seals the pavement back up.
Yeah, for those in the audience and watching at home, the HERF funds are the highway user revenue funds. So those are funds that are given back to us from the taxes we're paying in gas when we fill up our cars. So we want to spend that whole budget to get that money back onto the roads to maintain roadway. So it's important that we get, get and maintain the roadways using the tax dollars that are intended for that purpose. Are there any other questions or comments before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move to award the bid for the base bid and alternate one for fiscal year 2019, 2020 chip seal program to Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport Incorporated for $773,946.78.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Groth and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item nine on the agenda is our current events. Do we have any council committee reports? All right, moving on to item 10 is our final call to the public. This is again where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. If you would like to speak at the call to the public, just make your way up to the podium and state your name. All right, seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Our future meetings are Tuesday, March 24, 2020, at 6:00 PM. We'll have a regular meeting. And on Tuesday, April 14, 2020, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. Are there any future discussion items?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The future discussion item I'd like to bring forward tonight is probably just common sense, and I don't think anybody will object to it. But when our city manager first joined us, he would give us a weekly report, usually on Fridays. And I think now during this COVID-19 coronavirus situation that we have, I think the entirety of the council would like to receive a report, preferably like on a Friday, to kind of culminate what we've learned or what has changed in this rapidly changing environment on Friday, so once a week. And I guess I would have to make that by way of motion and have it seconded so it could, you know, just be entered into the record, but I would assume that there would be no issue with that.
So moved, our second.
All right, so we have a future discussion item, which we'll talk about and see how to get that information out to ensure that we can get the information out to the council certainly and to the citizens. I think Mr. Knutson did a great job today with the inclusion of the city manager's report to indicate to us as the council and to the citizens some of the actions that we're doing. But thank you. Any additional future discussion items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Be kind. Thank you for being here.[1785.11][1785.11][music]